...Board of Appeals.
There it is.
We will start with Annie reading the first application.
Where shall I read?
Oh, Bob, you can read. So, Annie, one of these days, we're going to get to read it.
Thank you, Reverend Chairman.
He's very shy.
First application, Signifex LLC, Paul Cooks, Distraiture, 97th Avenue, Situate, Mass. The applicant seeks to amend a special permit issued to him on April 10, 2014, and recorded at Plymouth County Registry of Deeds on May 1, 2014. This special permit authorized Signifex LLC to add a two-story addition to a pre-existing non-conforming structure. The applicant seeks to amend this special permit or be granted a new special permit pursuant to MGL Chapter 48, Section 6, to raise and reconstruct the single-story structure on the site at 165 Front Street, Situate, Assessors Map 50, Block 1, Parcel 33.
Mr. Custis.
Good evening.
Good evening. So it happened, or it didn't happen?
Well, what is happening is we have plans for the addition and engineering designs to reinforce the existing structure. And after all that design work is done, I set up the engineering builder and win over it. It could be done in that method, but it would be easier, quicker, probably cheaper, to take the existing building down and start from scratch.
How old is the existing building?
1940. It's in such condition that the amount of retrofitting that would have to be done to it just doesn't make any sense.
Okay. The only question, I mean, first of all, does anybody have any, and your proposal is to stay within the exact same footprint?
It's identical.
Okay.
What we're talking about.
Okay. So it's just...
It's just be new construction instead of...
It's just rebuilding what's there now.
Right.
And continuing with them.
Will there be any work to foundation, Jim?
That's the big part.
Yeah.
The foundation that's there is insufficient to carry the weight of the addition.
Okay. Bob, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I looked this over, and it seems pretty straightforward, and I can certainly sympathize and easily visualize the situation that would create this request, so I'd be in favor of it.
Anything else?
No, it's just a rebuild instead of a remodel.
Okay, great.
And is it appropriate to be an amendment or a new one?
Well, that was actually my question, too.
I think it wouldn't take much to amend it. I guess I don't think it makes much difference if it was advertised and everything the same way.
Right. Were all the neighbors given notice?
Everybody was.
Okay. Is this point, at this point, does anybody here want to be heard on this? Okay.
My name's Sarah Blanchard. I live at 165A. That's directly behind. I'm just concerned about the parking. I don't know if we looked at the land there. It's a very small area. And from what I've heard of the plan, the size of the structure is going to actually triple. And parking there is, there's four businesses there, and they're going to be adding more density. So I do have a concern about that as being a, well, actually a part of the condo. It is a condo. So there are, the three other units are, you know, discussing the bylaws that need to be amended to have this passed, so those are just my concerns.
Well, I guess, we don't know anything about any necessary amendments of the bylaws. That wouldn't be within our purview. But we previously looked at the parking on this, and because he's getting, he's deleting the use, the commercial use, it balances out the residential use for the parking. So the parking is going to be...
Does it have any business there?
It's parking, no, but he's not going to have as much business space. And business space requires a certain amount of parking, and residential is less dense with the parking, you know, per square footage. So the parking's not going to change. It's going to be exactly the same.
We're not proposing to add any parking either. We have three parking spaces at this point. We'll retain, we'll just retain the three parking spaces.
Right, right.
Yeah, I'm just concerned because there's going to be a residence there with the three parking spaces, and so you're actually adding a residence with the current three parking spaces and keeping a business.
But you're keeping less of a business, because he's changing some of the business space to residential, which has less of a parking requirement.
That's, he's not changing his business. His business is going to remain the same.
The second floor was also considered space, so we're reducing that second floor from what was considered business space to now residential space.
But it's a one-story building.
Is it actually two-story?
Yeah, and they're adding a third floor.
Well, looking at my documents I have, it's a story and a half.
Right, which is essentially considered two stories.
Okay. Just wanted to be heard.
Yeah, and if there's an issue with the condo association, you're going to have to take that up with them. Because he's not changing the footprint, you know, generally you get, you know, if he was going to expand, you know, with respect to the footprint, he may have another issue, but he's not, so...
No, I understand that. I just feel like he's expanding upwards, so it is...
This is true.
It is growing, so...
It is, but...
And there's more people going to be living in that area.
But less business use. I think that's the difficulty. I'm having trouble explaining perhaps, but the, I don't know, just, Bob, do you know what the parking bylaws are?
Not without looking it up.
I think it requires one bit.
We reviewed this last time.
Yes, I remember Neil had actually physically gone out to the site, reviewed the second floor as well, came back with the information to get the square footage difference.
Actually, there's less of a parking issue with the addition than there is now.
Right.
Technically, not that it's any more or less tricky.
Right, the parking has grown from what it is, but the need for parking is...
See, in the bylaw, none of us can put our fingers on it, but in the bylaw, depending on the use of the property...
Page 108.
What is it?
760.6.
What is it?
760.6.
Yeah, page 108.
Okay.
The moral of the story is it was in compliance before, and it's still in compliance, right?
Right.
And I go on to stress, we're not taking up more than three parking spaces, which we pay mortgage on right now.
Right.
That's not going to change.
We understand that. We're just trying to explain it. Okay, so, but that's the, we've looked at it as sufficient, and now he's not doing anything different we weren't going to let him do before. He's just going to put it, instead of the old construction, he's putting new construction exactly the same way. Okay, anybody else?
Nope, just, I just, the height, was it the proposed height same as the original proposed? Okay, so that, again, none of it has changed. We have to elevate the first floor at all, any, at the foot plan, or that's going to remain the same as well? Is there any space being added underneath? There was a crawl space, or...
There's crawl space there now.
Right.
Might, if there's room for foundation, we're putting foundation in so there'll be a cellar.
Yeah, would mechanicals be going there, or?
Not sure.
Okay, and nothing...
Probably not.
All right, no other mechanicals on the outside at this point, outside the...
The outside...
Not much room, but...
Yeah, this, the outside, I mean, this project, as we're proposing it now, is identical, the end result is identical in vision to the provision. There's no change in that. It's just redoing the first floor to make it a stronger building, better for, in essence.
Up to 2015 building code standards as opposed to 1940, no building code.
We did one other question to the audience.
Okay, no, I'm sorry. First of all, you have to just wait to be recognized. We just got to retain order. Second of all, anybody who has comments to make, if you just, you have to make sure that you state your name and address for the record, and Annie takes that down, so...
Okay. I'm here in McIntosh. I live in Manassas, Virginia, but I own property here. I'm just curious, I've never been to a meeting like this before, but what kind of building are the people going to reconstruct or make? Is it within the, I guess, quaintness of what we kind of call that here, that people love to see, or is it going to be a modern structure? I'm just curious.
Would you like to speak to that?
I would say that it's going to be as quaint as it is now.
This is, this is a local, very well-known artist, and I will tell you, his professional reputation rests on what this building looks like as well as his personal, and I'm sure it's going to look fabulous.
Okay. Just wondering, in the culture of the neighborhood?
In the culture of the neighborhood. That makes good neighbors.
See it does.
And good business.
The actual, do you dress?
Oh, yeah.
Which one, where I live now, or is it...
Two or two.
Oh, 56. Gilson, G-I-L-S-O-N.
Okay, anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Julie Hawkins, and I'm in the butter 157, thank you. And my one concern that I really want to remain there is that is a beautiful tree that provides shade to my building as well as an ambiance of the quaintness of the area, and I'd like to make sure that tree stays.
Well, I don't think we have any control over the tree. The condo association may, but we don't have any, we can't make any ruling on a tree. So my suggestion would be to contact Mr. and Mrs. Custis and talk to them about it, and if there's an issue that falls under the, you know, the purview of the condo association, you'd need to bring it up to them.
We're aware of the tree. As the building goes up, it's going to have to be trimmed, since it's hanging over a building, just like, you know, any legal issue, if you have a tree that's hanging over a building, you have a right to do that. That's not, I don't think that belongs here, but certainly we'll be very cognizant of that and sensitive to that, as much as we can.
Very good. Okay, anyone else? All right, do we have a motion?
On the application of Signifex LLC, Signifex LLC, to amend the existing permit that the board granted after a hearing on March 20, 2014, and decided in a decision stamped that we, April 10, 2014, amend the special permit to reflect that it will raise and rebuild the existing foundation at first floor.
And I would just add to that, too, all of the conditions to remain the same.
Yeah, and otherwise, the special permit granted a year ago remains the same.
Seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Much. I don't know who the turn it is, but I haven't written one in quite a while, so I bet it's mine.
I don't know if it's me or you.
This is an easy one.
I got lucky last time. I got the easy one, too. We got attorneys to write on that.
Yeah, I think I had like one lined up, and my case calls it, oh, my dad. I'm like, okay.
Frank to right. Okay, Bob, would you like to read our second application?
Certainly. Second application, Raymond C. Alma G. Morrison, 22 Tickner Court, Situate, request a special permit under Section 610.2. B, the Situate zoning bylaws, to permit the creation of a 50-foot frontage lot at 22 Tickner Court in Situate, Mass., Assessors Map 45, Block 2, Parcels 39 and 40.
Yeah, can you put...
Maybe if we put that kind of just...
Yeah, if you like that the audience...
Come up here.
That way the audience can kind of see a little bit of it, anyway.
Maybe all the way up. Please give them a chance to see.
I'm a civil engineer with Morris Engineering. I'm here with the owner of the property, Alma Morrison. We're here for a request for a special permit for a 50-foot frontage lot. This property is 22 Tickner Court. It's shown in Assessors Parcels 45-2-39-40, so two parcels. They total across 1.4 acres, and located in our, so 1,000 square feet of land required. There are two lots that we're proposing. The first lot is the lot that will contain the existing home. That lot has 171.95 feet of frontage, and it has 22,497 square feet, so that has double the land area, and then we don't need a special permit lottery. All of the structures are located on that property, and they need the required property on setbacks, with the exception of a shed that falls on the property line that will be relocated. Lot 2 is the lot that requires a special permit for 50 feet of frontage on the 6th floor, which is a public way. That 50 feet is carried through the access way, and then it opens up to the rear portion of the property. That lot has approximately 37,000 square feet of land area. It's required to have 20,000. Therefore, Lot 2 meets all of the requirements for a special permit for a 50-foot frontage lot.
Okay. Well, I'm going to just sort of stop you, because it's actually, you need two times the required area of upland, and that's not noted on the plan. I know you say that there is no wetland resource area, but I would like to see it on the plan that there is a minimum of 20,000 square feet of uplands.
That's correct. We have the wetlands delineated by a professional wetland scientist, Brad Holmes, and the wetland falls off of the property. I do have other plans that are being filed tomorrow with conservation for an RDA and the Board of Health for the septic plan for stormwater, in that they show the flag locations off-site, and I actually have them sitting right here if you'd like to see them.
Okay, yeah, I think we're going to need a copy of that in the building department to be submitted, so do you have them to leave with us?
They're draft plans. I can give you the final permits tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, because if, you know, depending on what happens tonight, I think that before a permit can be issued, I would like to see that, I don't know about my fellow board members.
Yeah, well, just to confirm, I mean, part of the requirements.
It's not that we doubt you, it's just that the record has to be right.
Yeah. So...
You want to take a look now, so we can confirm, and then this way, you know?
Yeah, this...
Then we know, we can decide if we can drop it off later.
Actually, for the first time, looked at Chapter 131, Section 40. It's quite long.
That's the law designed for Lot 2. This is the wetland, it's called, delineated by Brad Holmes of Environmental Consulting and Restoration in June of 2015. The wetlands in blue, the 50-foot buffer in red, and the 100-foot buffer in green.
Again, that being the wetlands, that being the 50-foot buffer, not the 100-foot buffer.
Well, is the buffer considered upland? That's what I...
Yes. Because the wetlands would start here, and above that would be upland.
Okay, so this is all considered, okay. So if you, you know, if you can make a delineation on the plan for us, that it's all uplands, that would be good. And then submit a copy of this plan that really kind of backs that up. So you want this back, and, you know, we'll make a note, depending on what happens, we're not there yet. So first person I always like to ask is, Bob, do you have any questions or comments on this?
No, I was going to say the same thing, that we need that notation, but the layout of the front is fine, the 50 feet of frontage is maintained throughout the access to Lot 2. The land area is sufficient. Setbacks, I'm sure, will allow location of the building appropriately. Seems fine.
Any other members of the board have any other questions?
No, it just seems like the meeting of all the requirements, now they have the upland issue resolved, but the double script, double lot size, or the required lot size, the setbacks seem to all be there as well. And the shed you addressed, as far as moving that, relocating that shed, there's no other buildings or anything else on the property, no?
There are other buildings on Lot 1 that need the setbacks.
Right, no, no, just on the Lot 2.
Yeah, it's that one shed. It's sitting on, on the same lot.
Did you print the letter?
Easy move.
Yeah, and there's, and these drainage easement, is that just, who's that from on the...
It's a drainage pipe that runs under, from Plamore Terrace, under this property, and then to the left, no, off-site.
Okay, is, what's going to be built, is there anything that will be built on that? Is a septic on top of that, or?
What is it, how many feet are you required to have in this zone? The 10?
10, three?
Yeah.
Yeah, 10,000.
So just so we're clear here, this, once you get approved, if you do get approved, there's no further subdividing of this lot, and that'll be a condition of the permit?
Yeah, we drew a concept, there is enough frontage and land area to do three lots similar, but that's not the route they want to take. They're aware of that.
So this is going to be much less dense than it could otherwise be?
And again, just to reiterate for everyone in the audience, that the right to further divide this is given up once, if this passes, so they can't come back at any point and divide the property again.
How are we supposed to be seeing a shared driveway?
No, there's only one lot on this 50-foot frontage. The other lot is separate.
You can say that lot, so, John, speak out loud so people can hear you.
We're just saying the lots are separate.
Right, but I heard you, but I'm not...
So they do not need to have a shared driveway?
Correct, no.
They might take down that hedge. I'm not sure.
I got you.
If the board has no other questions, is there, I know we did get one letter from Anna Butter. Is that person here? Okay.
Yeah, Jan Rose from Harborview Road by property of Butts. The property is rented behind it. I am concerned, as I said in my letter, I'm concerned about the location of the septic systems, and because I did, Ms. Morrison did show me the plan, but it appears to be very, very close to that drainage pipe. There also is an additional, a second drainage pipe that was put in several years ago because there is significant flooding, and the water was streaming down from that area across my property and washing neighbors' driveways away. So that's a concern for us in that area, because there's not just the one drainage easement, there's another drainage pipe.
Well...
It appeared that the septic was very, very close to this drainage easement.
You haven't been in front of the Board of Health, I assume, yet, right?
No, we located the drainage pipes, the leachable, and then on them 10 feet off the bump, and they are. As far as stormwater, the town of Situate does require a stormwater permit before you can build a house on a vacant lot, and they will be required to get a stormwater permit before they build the house. And the reason of that is to make sure that you aren't going to increase flow onto any of these properties.
So basically, what we're saying is that what we're dealing with here tonight is the creation of the lot. Ms. Morrison is going to have to go before a couple of other town boards to get other permits, and if she doesn't get those other permits, then they're, you know, they're not going to be building a house there. But those other boards, including the Board of Health, and who do you get, is it, who do you get the stormwater permit from?
That would be Conservation.
Okay, Conservation. So she, they're going to have to go through two other town boards, and you'll have an opportunity, because they will direct, address those specific issues. And so those are the boards that you'll be able to bring those concerns up, and they'll make sure that, you know, there is not any washover on the property, and that the septic system is properly and legally placed.
And that there is indeed a septic system, because prior to this, there was also a permit to put, connect to a sewer pipe, to a sewer, to make a sewer connection to Harborview Road, which has already been denied. So I want, you know, I'm concerned naturally that the property can withstand two septic systems.
They'll have to perk it and prove that to the Board of Health.
And we have here the former chair of the Board of Health, so...
Okay, because, again, the water and the septic is a primary concern, because, again, about, I think it was probably eight years ago, there was a need to put a second drainage in between these properties.
Is that listed on...
It's on, it's on my property.
Okay, that's why it's not, we don't have...
We're not seeing it, so that plan doesn't show it, and I really can't see where exactly the property lines of the divisions of these two lots are from this plan. So it would be great if the neighbors could have access to how exactly the lots are being divided.
Well, it's divided, I think if you look at the plan, it's, the lots being divided on the Tickner Court side of the shed and straight across.
So is it horizontal or vertical?
Well, there's both. If you want to come up and see the plan?
Sure, that would be great. I would like to see.
I'm sorry, I didn't, Jeff, your last name?
Hassett, H-A-S-S.
Maybe Mr. Hassett can point it out to you.
This is the overall property.
Yes.
With Tickner Court here, and you are what number, Harborview?
Two.
So this is your property here. This, the division line goes here, a 90-degree angle, back to that property line.
You see the shed there?
So there's a square, a rectangle that goes up there.
Yep. So Lot 2 has the majority of the land area.
So it's coming up that way. So it will be helpful if we have, you know, a visual of that we can look at.
Have you per...
Yeah, we've done, we've done perks for a septic repair for the existing house and for the septic system for the new house and repair system.
I saw a lot of this drainage issue you're going to have to address in the stormwater.
Yeah, and it will be.
Permit there, so if we have some of that information now, that, there's a lot of clay around there, too, so they probably...
It's a sandy loom. The material does perk, it's not sand, but we're showing a swale along that property line, the one that you're concerned with, saying to...
That would be the property line at Butts, Harborview Road.
I'm not so sure where this swale is.
This is the area of the septic system, and we, on our plan, is that will, the stormwater plan, their flow areas, it's a grade, grade to rear, so we'll go back this way. There won't be any runoff onto this property, number two.
Okay, because as I was informed, I thought that the septic system is right up here in this corner.
Yes, it is.
Okay, so am I correct in thinking that?
Yeah, but again, that's going to be dealt with in, at the Board of Health, so...
I would suggest that when the hearing is set for the Board of Health, they have to file the plans in advance, and if you really want to study it, I would go visit the Board of Health before the hearing, and you'll be able to see all the plans, and the health agent, I'm sure, would answer most of your questions about septic systems. The technology on these septic systems is very, very good these days, and they're designed so that they do not, you know, really leach out into these types of areas that you're concerned about, and that's a pretty good-sized buffer. I'm not sure which type of system they're proposing, but the technology is pretty good.
And again, that's one of my other concerns, is I want to make sure that that would work, and because prior to this, there was a proposal to run a sewer pipe across my property, and that concerns me greatly.
I'd rather have sewer pipe. Frankly, I'd rather have sewer pipe.
I guess it's a matter of perspective. It's, you know, we've been through so much construction and... It's, you know, we've been through so much construction on Harborview Road, and we just had our water lines changed, and then there was the additional drainage easement several years back, so real tired construction.
I'm sure. Is there anyone else with any questions on this part, on this, sir?
Richard Stoll, I live at 28 Quarter Road, my wife Susan. We've been through this before, a piece of property was built at the end of ticno court. Now I understand there are any issues with drainage and the water, we go before Board of Health and Conservation.
Yes.
All right, so I'll take that up with those two boards, but I have a question, I heard one of the gentlemen say that once they do something with the property, they change it or divide it or do something, they can't do anything else with it, except build that home if it's approved.
They cannot further subdivide the lot.
Right.
So, once, if you approve this for them, they're locked into building that home there.
No, they don't have to build a home, they just can't build any other home, if-
Well, they can build another home, they can't re-subdivide a lot, they could knock down a house and rebuild it-
Right, right, that's what I mean.
As much as the bylaws in the Building Department allows. There'll be no going-forward restriction on that, they'll just be prohibited from further dividing these lots.
Okay, so-
So it will remain a single-family lot?
So, if someone, if someone approaches them, who has another buildable lot beside them, and the only way that they can get through that lot is through their property, if they give them a right of way through their property, can that be done?
No, they can't further subdivide the lot.
Well, does the prohibition against further subdivision prevent them from giving an easement?
I don't know.
I don't believe it.
I don't know, and you know what, and we're not gonna discuss-
It's a right of way.
It's really not, it's not our expertise, and it's not our issue, and-
Part of the restrict-
You might need an attorney on that issue, but, you know, if they qualify for a 50-foot frontage lot, and we give it to them, the one thing they can't do is now say, because it's a 10,000-square-foot, you know, area, and they're gonna have 37,000 square feet there, they can't come and say, oh, we really have room for three houses back here, they can't do that. They have one house.
Which they could do now. They could ask for, for three lots.
But they're asking for one lot.
They're giving that up, and saying, we give up our right to build three 10,000-square-foot, or put in 10,000-square-foot lots, under this 50-foot provision in our bylaw. And the bylaw expressly says that you can't, once you do that, you can't further subdivide the lot. And it gets recorded, and so anybody who subsequently purchases it is bound by that law.
10 years, 20 years, 50 years, 100 years?
It's on the deed.
Okay, anyone else? All right, any other comments or questions from the Board?
No.
Nope, anyone have a motion? Oh, Mr. Motion.
It's all you. You're back on the horse.
Let's see, motion to accept Raymond C. and Alma Morrison, 22 ticno court, Situate request for special permit at, from section 610 dot 2 dot B of the Situate zoning bylaw, permit to create a 50-foot frontage lot at 22 ticno court, and the assessors map being 45, Lot 2 parcel 39 and 40.
You just need to say it's subject to the conditions that Sarah said before about filing a wetlands plan and delineating the plan that everything is upland, and also that the, it will be conditioned by the fact that they can further subdivide the lot.
Conditioned by the, there's no further subdivision of the lot, and that we receive a copy of, a stamped copy of the plans for the septic system, job number 14383, dated 7/1615 submitted.
And the notation on the original plan?
Well, I think the septic plan with the 2-
I don't see, it doesn't say, it doesn't give all uplands on it.
Yeah, well, I think this plan submitted will be the notation.
I, not satisfying to me, I'll tell you.
All right, would you like to?
Because I want the exact, I want the words, I want the magic words.
All land, all land is upland area on this plan.
All upland? Yes, it's all upland.
Yes. Yeah, no other plant.
Yeah.
Yeah, it just has a-
And I believe, do we need to say that the deed for the second lot shall contain a restriction?
Yes, yes, we do.
Yeah, I think we do.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Could I just perhaps say for the record, that it's, the application was done in the name of Raymond C. and Alma J. Morrison. My husband died over 10 years ago.
Oh, sorry, you hear that?
And his name is not on the title anymore.
Okay.
So it's-
Okay, we will reflect that.
It's all confusing because my present husband is also Raymond, but his last name is not Raymond.
Okay. Well, that makes some things easier, doesn't it? God bless you.
Sort it out.
That's right.
Thank you.
Oh, let me give you this from back, so we've got a stamped copy.
I'd rather have that.
But yeah, you answered a lot of questions with it.
Yeah.
Actually, I used to go over the newspaper when I was a kid.
Uh, you should?
Yeah.
Who gets to write this one?
Probably me, I'll take it.
Oh, I'm happy you have it, John, to write, I'm like crazy right now. Not that I couldn't get it done in 90 days, but they'd probably like it sooner. Okay, I'm sorry, could you guys take that outside so we can move along? We're on a roll here, thank you. The next, third application, Bob?
Third application, K&amp;E Construction 209 Broadway, Hanover, Mass, requests MGL Chapter 40A, Section 6, special permit slash finding, to raise and reconstruct the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling-
You have some easels in the back.
At 55 Gilson Road, Situate, Mass, assessors map 60 block 01 parcel 25.
They do that, don't they?
They did. Good evening, Kevin Greedy from Greedy Consulting, along with John Brennan from K&amp;E Construction, representing the applicant for the special permit for you here. The site is at 55 Gilson Road, existing lot of record, this may be considered in approximately 1900, originally small lot, based how it was constructed in approximately 1930, and the last of the different lot was approximately 1900, and it was a zoning, it's existing lot of record, non-conforming, and it's located in the residence R3 zone, which requires 10,000 square feet of area and 100 feet of frontage. This lot has approximately 6,800 square feet, approximately 6,800 square feet, and has 75 feet of frontage. Some of the lots in this neighborhood are smaller than that, 50-foot frontages, 5,000 square feet. So this special permit before you is for the raise and rebuild of this existing non-conforming structure, and the application is in compliance with MGL 40, Section 6, and also, which also is only by law, Section 810, 2. The proposed structure is set in a location that meets all the horizontal dimensional requirements, so it meets the 8-foot side setbacks, and 30-foot front and 20-foot rear requirements. The-
It meets the 30-foot front?
Sorry, it's, it's further back than the original, non-conformance, I apologize, that's correct. So we're moving it back further from the front street.
3.
There is no way we can change the non-conformities of frontage and area in this location. So the standard for the application is that we apply to the zoning board, and the board needs to determine that the extension or alteration will not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conformity to the neighborhood. The existing property is a residential property, we're proposing a residential use here. The use will not increase traffic in the neighborhood, we're providing off-street parking, backward off-street parking, so we won't, again, have impacts on the roadway use. The existing structure was built in approximately 1930, it's in disrepair.
So the existing structure is kind of-
The foundation is in disrepair, not usable, there's no real financial or substantial way to improve the existing structure. I attempted to go into the basement to measure some plumbing, and there was wet moldy cracks in the foundation. So we're gonna substantially improve the structure and the residents, if we're improving the, the property values of the neighbors, of the neighborhood. I've also provided some architecturals here. And included them in your packages. We've spent a lot of houses on this street in the recent number of years, have gone through this same scenario, where the houses were built because, you know, a long time ago, because the subdivision was created in 1900, those houses have aged and leave, most of the people are removing the houses and building new ones and requesting the same special permit. So the architecturals are in line with the character of the neighborhood, the elevation is set such that the foundation and the basement won't be in groundwater, that's why you see windows on the basement floor there, there's groundwater along the, the whole hill is clay, water runs off, it's not far below the surface. The town actually has a stormwater bylaw that we've applied for, and will provide its stormwater mitigation. It's a, that will help the abutting properties, and the runoff created from this increased size of structure will not increase the peak flow off the site, so we're protecting the abutters from stormwater damage. Like we improve the runoff of the areas and protect the stormwater on the site.
How many square, how much square foot in the existing home? Well, let's take the second question, how many square foot footage in the proposed structure?
1,888. 1,888, yes.
And did I miss that on the plan?
Square footage of ground cover, and-
Well, that's not the, that's not the question, no.
The finished floor area will be 2760, and you, the finished floor area. So the building footprint is 1,888, the finished floor area is 2760.
Are you talking about one story, or are you talking about two stories here?
The first and second floor, finished, living space, essentially.
Is that all we need, Bob? Is this the first and second floor, maybe finished space, or do you include the-
Unless the basement's finished off, it looks like that could possibly be the case, in which case that, that counts as well.
What about the attic space? Do we have any attic space here?
No, I would say that's probably from what I'm looking at. Certainly not living space.
The intention is not to finish the basement, I asked that question earlier today.
I can find the bottom off.
It looks like the existing square footage, too, is 916, with the assessors map.
That sounds right.
916, 916 square feet.
Because you need, oh, it's, here it is, you need also a permit under 810.3, no, 810.2, you're increasing it by more than 20%.
810.2, my reading of it, of single-family, 810.2A?
810.2, I have to read it, non-conform solar issues, I suppose we're here.
So my reading that says that-
That's why we're here.
The building inspector can issue a permit if it's less than 20%, if it's over 20%, we need to come to you.
Here you are.
That's why we're here, eh?
That's it?
Yeah.
But that's a relief, you see.
That's the relief.
So, I never have quite understood whether or not that needs, because that wasn't part of your permit, but do you-
Yeah, we applied on the 810.2.
810.2, all right, what if I can find it again?
Yeah, here it is.
Yeah, in the body of my letter, and-
Okay.
Right. About halfway down the board.
Yep, 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 okay, good, so, so we just need to give you that little blessing, because you're, but-
But you're actually wrong.
Yes.
Whoever the standard is, it's not more detrimental than the existing non-conformable single-family structure. We need to, under the GL decision, decide whether there exists non-conformities, which you've laid out, thank you very much, whether you are proposing to increase or intensify the non-conformities, we have to make findings as to that. And if the answer is no, we don't even have to decide the substantial detriment question, even though I think in an exercise of the classroom, for the last few months, we've been doing that anyway, and I suggest we do that here today.
Well, I mean, I think it's-
If we get that far.
Right, right, well, I think it's, I think it's pretty obvious, it's a substantial-
It's a tripling of the size.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so, I'm still not quite, did we ever come up with an agreement on how much you're proposed, not, because we can't use 1,888 if it's only the first floor?
Yeah, we said the 2750.
2750?
Right.
2760.
And that's not including the basement were it to be finished.
Okay.
Which certainly looks like it's pretty well queued up to be finished, from the plans that we're seeing.
Okay, so, and the present is, you found it on the assessors card?
Yes, 916.
Square foot?
Can you hand that in, hold that, too?
Okay, so, yeah, so that's a question.
Are there any other 2,700-square-foot properties on these sized lots in this neighborhood?
Yeah, we, we reviewed the assessors records on Gilson Road, probably towards Bassin Lane as well, on Gilson Road, there was- On Gilson Road, um, there is one, two, three, four houses over four thousand square feet. There is, on...
Can you give us the numbers?
Sure. Um, so seventy-five Gilson, and this is based on the assessors'.
Yep.
Record. There's forty-two eighty-one. Seventy-nine Gilson, there's forty-eight ninety-eight. Eighty-three Gilson, there's forty-three thirty-eight. And ninety-one Gilson is forty-one seventy-nine. And then we've got, uh...
How big are the lots, do you know that?
I don't have that. I have, um, well, this, I have, I have a little thirty-five hundred square feet.
You said there's three greater than thirty-five?
Yep. Uh, one oh-one, one oh-five, and one eleven.
We, we know which way the, the bigger houses are all headed, at the other end of the street. Yeah.
I mean, it's a desirable, desirable neighborhood, where this has happened, you know, many, many times.
Yeah.
And the houses are at the age where they're, they, they, they will be raised, um, and rebuilt. And we're, we're a desirable neighborhood, um, people wanna move here and improve them substantially, you know?
The, um, what's that house right to the east of you, it's pretty tiny, is that, is that?
There's one to the, no, east and west. Um, number fifty-three, um, number one, Bassin Lane.
Oh, yeah, that's what I'm looking at. That one looks really tiny. Um, all right, um, Bob, do you have any questions or comments, concerns?
No, I mean, it seems to meet the requirements. It could, uh, have justified its setback from the street line by averaging setbacks of the homes within two hundred feet on either side, and just glancing a little piece we can see on this plan, it probably would have qualified under that, um, provision as well. Uh, it shows a deck that's closer to the property line and back than the required, uh, distance, but decks are not subject for everybody's information to setback requirements, only if they're covered. So assuming this is not covered and never covered, and remains a deck, then there's no problem with that. I assume you're gonna have to file for a stormwater permit on this?
You're welcome.
Okay. I know of at least one other house, very similar to this in size and even in style, that's been built recently right along the stretch of Gilson, so I don't think this is gonna look out of place, my thing. So that's, that's probably...
Yeah, I, I certainly wouldn't call it, you know, a humongous house. It's a nice sized house, but it's not humongous. Yeah, um, all right, anybody on the, the board have any questions or comments?
It's a, it, my only, I guess, comment is it's three times larger and, and, for I look at the people who develop them, I'm just wondering how big these other lots are, um, whether they're that much bigger. It just, it just seems that this, this is gonna be a pretty big structure on a small lot. But absolutely. I don't think...
The other one's a half acre.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't be surprised if we did the research to find that each of those other four lots are...
No, we can't...
Bigger than this.
Much bigger, yeah.
But, I, I guess...
There, there is one, however, really right in this area, within two or three homes or lots, one way or another, I'm not exactly sure, but that's almost identical to this one.
Yeah.
And I assume the lots the same size.
I don't think there's too many half acre lots, that's, that's if you're talking about...
Well, when you get off the top of the...
You may be talking, you may be talking about...
When you're off the top on the, on the clip, the lots get larger.
Yeah, but I, I, well, we consider that a different, a different area. The house you're talking about may actually be mine.
Oh, really?
Like, mine's two houses down, and it's similar as viewed from the street, but it's L-shaped, it's actually probably even on a lot of these plans.
What number do you live?
I'm at, uh, forty-nine. And so mine, it looks, from the street, it looks the same as every other lot on the street, but we've got a strip behind it that runs all the way up the hill that's behind all the other houses on the street that contributes to that square footage. From the street, it appears the same size as every other.
That's what I remember. We actually expect it to be...
Still, man?
Any, uh, comments, Anthony?
I, uh, think I'm good. No, I just had some, some little concerns with Frank, had with the tripling of the size, but, uh, you know, it's a, they've done it in other places in the neighborhood, but as they say, uh, there's not too many one-story homes now being built.
Well, not, especially not with the lot prices that even small lots are going for these days. No one's gonna pay four-fifty for a lot and then put a thousand square foot house on it, it just doesn't make financial sense.
Well, you mean the setbacks are for, for the lot except for the front?
They improve the non-conformity.
Right, which does reduce the non-conformity, um, by actually quite a bit. What, what's the, um, what's the, what's the...
We will have, we'll have questions in, when we finish...
Oh, it's twenty, it's twenty feet, and you're now, you're pushing it back to twenty-four point five.
Correct.
Um, oh, yeah, twenty-four point five, and that's the...
That's the covered...
Covered porch.
Yes.
Okay.
And the main body is twenty-six point nine.
I take it, you know, is it town sewer?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
So, I guess the question to me under G L is, does it intensify an existing non-conformity, which to me would be, it intensifies the fact that it's a small lot, that the, the lot area is non-conforming.
Right.
Um, and so, if the board were to find that, then we would then have to find whether it's a substantial, more substantial detriment than the existing structure.
Right.
Yeah, I think some of that was answered with, uh...
All right.
Parking, or off-street parking and the use too.
Um, is there anybody from the audience who'd like to be heard? Yes?
Hi, I'm Colleen Carlson, fifty-three Gilson Road.
You were right next door, it looks like.
Right next door.
Okay.
Our, um, lot size is fifty-one hundred square feet. Our home, it's, um, I guess, nineteen-twenty-two Ungelo, um, that's nineteen hundred square feet. The house that everyone's talking about is next door to us. Um, on fifty-five will be next door to us, and we have an existing driveway that is right, right next door to that property. My concern is the size of the home being built. It would be, we live on a cliff, and it kind of goes up, and, I don't know, it would just kind of be, kind of take things over, cause it's such a small lot. So that's a concern. And then, of course, the runoff too, because the lots were so close, the water runoff, because, um, you know, we do have gathered water when we have, you know, heavy rain and a lot of snow and those kinds of things. So where we are so close, that's just a concern.
Well, as we said on the last application, they have to, they have to go before the conservation to, to show that they have made, um, necessary, um, plans for stormwater runoff, so you're not gonna get all that. And, um, and you don't have a hearing on that, right?
Um, I just went out to review.
Okay.
Actually, P R reviewed it.
So I, you'll get notice of the hearing, and you'll be able to go, and they'll have, you know, they'll have to explain how they're gonna prevent the runoff from coming onto your property, cause they can't do that under the new stormwater, I can't say in the new stormwater bylaw, but it's probably a while.
Actually, it's a new administrative review. Why is that? Because we are, we're under the square footage threshold, threshold for a full stormwater permit, and all the administrative review means is that it doesn't go before the board. It goes through the same process. Um, we have to meet the town's regulations, which is the state's regulations applied to residential dwellings. Um, and then they send it out to P R review, so, um, they'll send it out to somebody just like me who will review it, um, under the bylaw. Uh, and then they'll bring it back to the planning board, it's actually the reviewing authority in this case, to Laura, and then they'll approve it.
So is it, is there a hearing in front of the planning board then?
There's not. That's why I wanted to let you know that.
Okay.
However, the P R review is probably more stringent than going to the planning, cause they'll actually look at the numbers.
Cause they'll look at the contour of the property, the water runoff from the roof, the volumes...
The volumes, weird heights, and how much water's coming out of there.
Well, they need to, what you need, what they need to add to divert the water, so it doesn't go onto the neighbor's property.
Correct.
They do do a pretty thorough job with that, there's no, uh, it's, uh, a lot more difficult to...
It is.
To meet those requirements.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Hi, uh, Joanne Packard, aisle one, Bassin Lane. I bought, uh, this fifty-five Gilson, as you would face it, to the right. Uh, I would just like it explained, the width of, of frontage of that proposed house to be on Gilson. I understood it to be a seventy-five foot, uh, frontage?
Yes, the property.
The property frontage, seventy-five feet?
Yes.
Uh, what is the frontage of that proposed home?
Looks like the house is about fifty-three feet wide, if, if that's what you're asking.
It is.
Yeah.
My concern is, under butter, is more with environmental issues than anything else. Is that something ideal with the conservation department over?
Well, I'm not really sure what you mean by environmental concerns.
Yeah. Um, my property has a, is, uh, organic, no pesticides, toxic materials. I have a, uh, food source garden, which would have bought that property, so I'm concerned mostly about toxic materials and debris coming in to my property.
During construction, are you talking about?
Yes.
Well...
And perhaps landscaping as well.
Um, this is the thing.
Filtration.
Um, there is no bylaw in town that is going to tell them what they can and cannot use, that I know of anyway, that they can and cannot use on their property if, if the, I assume, are you at some point gonna sell this, is that the...
Yeah, that's the, it's not for my own personal...
Okay. So he's building the house, intends to sell the house, and whoever buys the house, you know, maybe will have a similar, um, concern as you and wanna do organic, uh, you know, landscaping, et cetera, and somebody may believe in chemlawn, and that's their, that's their right to do that. And so, there's nothing we as a board can do to dictate, um, use of any, or, you know, any organic material. Certainly as construction's ongoing, if debris gets onto your property, they can't do that, and that's, that's actually just called trespassing, you know? Um, I hate to tell them who to call, but if you called building, if you called somebody over there, you know, um, and, and they, you know, as good neighbors, I would assume that they not, wouldn't wanna do that, but, um, you know, sometimes things get blown over, and they would have to make sure if there was any damage, they'd take care of it or whatever.
Yeah, I'd also mention, Sarah, building is appropriate during construction. During the demolition process, Board of Health requires a couple of, uh, safeguards, an asbestos report, and a rodent control report on the existing house before it is demolished, and also notification to abutters of when that demolition is gonna take place.
Good, so you can take whatever precautions you can take.
Um, can there be, uh, can it be enforced that they have some sort of debris netting to prevent any of their materials during demolition and construction from entering onto my property?
Would do it...
Any kind of netting?
I, I can...
Just a simple fence is, is one way.
Well, some fence for, for surface runoff, right. And in terms of airborne debris, that, that's a little difficult, certainly anything other than that.
We typically have water on site, and wet the structure down as we demolish it to prevent airborne...
Standard, standard procedure, right, is to keep everything wet.
There's a, there's always a really good thing, I assume you're gonna be doing the construction yourself?
Uh, I'm a G C, so I have subcontractors, under my direction.
Okay, so here you go with the G C, general contractor, right here, and I would suggest you have a conversation with him about your concerns, and I'm sure he wants to be a good neighbor, he lives in the neighborhood, um, and, and I'm sure you can work out, you know, something that takes care, helps prevent any problems for you.
Yeah, I mean, fortunately, it's also a small structure, so it's, you know, the, the potential for things flying all over the place is, is relatively low, um, and we do keep it wet, and it's done with a, with an excavator, not a wrecking ball kind of thing, um, so it's, there's, it's very little drama involved in taking these things down one day. It's, it's a single day.
One other question too, is this a proposed two-by-three filtration trench on the, what's...
Um, so that's along the property, uh, east of the property line?
That's...
It's part of the drainage, um, um, system, so to the east is uphill, the water's currently flowing onto and across this property, so we're gonna intercept some of that and take credit for infiltrating it and holding back that volume. That infiltration trench is the means by which we do that. So that water will come in, it's filled with stone, thirty-three percent air, and that stone is filled with water, so you're taking volume of water and holding it.
Slowing it down.
Yep, and that's what, that's how we accomplish that.
Okay, I, I don't think Joanne has seen, that, that's on your property line, or they put you, the, the trench that you're talking about.
Um, I know there's a sewer easement running from Gilson into, uh, the back of, uh, Bassin Lane, uh, Kathy Robinson's property, but I'm not sure, I didn't look at my deed to see where the easement is, whose property, as long as they're aware, there's something going on down there.
Yeah, we don't have it...
I think it actually runs to her corner, I think it's mine at about forty yards on there. This is not showing on here. Um, what's that? Yeah, I know there's one in the area, it's on the, uh, sewer department's field cards for the properties in here. Yeah, it's on, um, the easement is on her property on one, it's on the other side of that lot line. I can show it to you if you're interested.
Sure.
That's why it's not on my plan, it's on her property.
So, two of my dairies, yeah.
This is, this is... Yeah, we got, right, so this is the lot line.
Right.
And that's the sewer easement. And if you look at my plan, you can see that shed, um...
Right, yeah.
Um...
The shed?
Upside down. Now, the shed.
Fifty-nine.
Yep, okay, see the shape?
Got it, yep, yep.
So that's what that is.
Yep.
Yeah, so that's a big shed.
Got it.
So can you see that, uh, shape of this shed?
Yeah.
That's just here, so then the easement is right here, this shed is on top of the easement.
Oh, oh, okay, that's on her property.
It's on her property.
Okay, so that's not, yeah.
I didn't see anything else, I was looking at them. Yeah, upside down.
Okay, got it. All right, any other questions?
I have one more concern, please.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm gonna get to somebody else first, then we'll get back to you, just to give other people opportunity.
Hi, I'm Catherine Doherty, and I'm fifty-six Gilson Road, and I am, I'm across the street, and I'm very concerned about the size of the property, seeing that it is more than tripling. Um, if you, our house is very small, it's eight-hundred-and-forty square feet, the one at fifty-two is also a small case, um, and I'm... case, and I'm just afraid that it's really going to be detrimental to the neighborhood. The bigger houses are not on big properties, they are up at the other end of the street, but certainly not at our end, and I've been here for nearly 60 years, and it's changed the look of the neighborhood. It's not the country seaside that it used to be, and I'm very, very concerned about the size of the property.
Mary McIntosh, 56 Gilson, I'm across the street also. I'm concerned, I really don't have problems with building something there, of course, but not to the extent of that size. I'm concerned about where do the material, the building material trucks park? It's a very narrow part of the street before it curves, it's very dangerous at that curve, and people fly up and down that street. I'm concerned, there's a two-car garage, but what happens, you know, maybe the people possibly moving in would have teens, and they would have cars, where do all the cars get parked if there's no other land around the house? And again, where, you know, it's just, it's too big, it's like a canyon going up that street now, because everything is so close to road, and they're so imposing, and I have no problem with being built there, but not to that extent, half of that extent. And I think what happened, people wanted to get the ocean views, so we were building way up, and it's just, again, it's like a canyon going down the street there.
Well, there is a, there's a height limitation by bylaw.
Right, okay.
And unless it was, you know, unless there's a bylaw that says, depending, your height limitation depends on your neighborhood, they're allowed to go up to that height.
I understand, I know, but I'm just saying, it's just too big a property for the size of the lot.
I understand. Yes, sir.
I have a question on 53 Gilson Road also.
In your name.
And when the Michael Carson, when the survey was done, my driveway, we moved in about four years ago, we had a driveway that was a fence, and we assumed that to be the property line, and after seeing the survey, it actually shows that this, some of the property line is actually on what I thought was 55 Gilson, and some of the other is on 55 Gilson's size. And so, with the setbacks, the 10, the whatever on the feed, I'm concerned about just the land that, if there can be a trade-off to make the land stay as it is, or...
I guess I'm not quite understanding.
We're sort of encroaching on each other.
Uh huh. Well, it looks like you're encroaching on him. So it's not each other.
At this point, there aren't any plans to take any action relative to that.
Right.
It's not bothering us in any way, so I have no, as long as, I have no... And that brings up more non-conforming issues if we're trading a lot of air.
Yeah, oh absolutely, absolutely.
That would be your purview, and it probably wouldn't be allowed.
Yeah.
It'd be very difficult.
Oh, so he's saying the fence probably runs right here.
We're not willing, it's not really.
Right. So you're, it looks like your driveway is partially on his property, yeah, and he says he's not going to do anything about it.
No, I understand, but if there are any way...
Nothing for us to do, I'll tell you that, and it causes different problems for him, because...
When I went to the building inspector, he suggested coming to the zoning board and asking to change the property line to be similar to what the fence is.
We don't have any, I'm not sure if you misunderstood, but we don't have any, any authority to do something like that. Land court might be, you know, but good luck on that, because you're the ones encroaching, see?
Or work it out with your neighbor.
Or work it out with your neighbor, but if you, if he were to do that, to, you know, deed you over a sliver of land, that actually creates more non-conformities for him, and actually then could prevent him, because he can't, I mean, I don't know how that would work, but he is then creating a non-conformity.
I understand, in my opinion, actually, the way I saw it is that I have 56-foot frontage, and I would lose three feet if there was...
Well, I'm not sure if you lose three feet, it's just whether or not you understood when you bought the property where your lot line actually was.
Well, that's another thing.
Right, and that's called title insurance, so maybe, maybe you call your mortgage company.
The rider that came, people that sold it to the house, they don't have a mortgage, so the rider said there was absolutely no encroachment.
Oh, well, that's not true, it looks like, but...
So somebody...
Somebody's got it wrong, and I'll tell you something, it's very, very, very expensive to fix, so you might be just, if it's only a three-foot issue, you know, you're probably better off where you're sitting.
I'll scream the front six in the back.
If both of you are in agreement as to how that property is used, and you talk to a land use attorney, they should be able to find an agreement between the two of you that makes everyone happy and doesn't create any new issues for anyone.
Right.
Be an easement or...
Whatever it may be, but it shouldn't be a very complicated solution.
Unless you have to sue for it, then you're talking.
We have no plans for it.
Okay.
That's perfectly fine, the way it is, and as far as I'm concerned, we're happy if it continues to be exactly as it is.
Can I ask you one question? Where the back of the house is going to be, will that appear to be closer to our property than where our fence is, I guess, because that's, you know, his using up?
Well, it's...
It's based on the property line, not the fence line.
No, I understand.
Oh, I see.
So it's nine feet from the property line.
If my fence is encroaching, does that mean that the house is going to be four feet from the fence, or is it still...
Probably, yes.
Yeah, it looks like, yeah, it could be, yeah, I mean, I don't, you can measure it, right?
Yeah, it's approximately four and a half feet, full feet from the fence.
Hi, I just have a quick question, let me clarify, how wide is the house?
53 feet.
It is 53 feet?
It's 53 feet, according to these plans.
Do we have a depth?
38.
Depth of the lot is 98 feet.
And it's, yeah, 38 on one side, and a little bit less than that on the second side. I think. Yes, ma'am?
Yes. Has anybody else spoken? Of just, so the proposed house, once finished, will leave 11 feet on either side of the house to the property lines.
It'll leave nine feet.
On either side?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a very large dwelling on a small lot, but whatever is legal has to go. My only other concern is, in fact, is the pine tree that is apparently on their property at 55 Gilson, if they decide, the builder decides to take that tree down or prune it, I would like it to be done professionally by an arborist. I have spent, two years ago, I spent close to $500 having it professionally pruned, so that it would grow back well, and I'm only bringing this up, and I don't know if it's the right place to bring it up. I'm concerned because the owner of the new house on Gilson, which we were talking about prior, had, it appeared to me, total disregard for the abutting property on the left side of his property. It looked to me as though a chainsaw was used and just cut right up from the fence line, and I have a picture of it, removing any branch that was on, from a neighbor's yard in a butter onto the existing property. I would say it was done by an arborist, and it does have a visual impact. Maybe legally, they can do that, but I would hope because of the size of this tree I'm talking about, I don't know the height, but that if it were pruned or taken down, it would be done professionally because it showed the roots extended to my property and perhaps the property you own made.
Is that the, it looks like the tree kind of close to the shed?
It's the existing shed, yeah. Yeah, there's a tree along the right properties line right now, which at this point, our every intent is to allow it to stay, it's not bothering us or the house. The issue will be one of access to the rear of the, of the property for equipment and things like that, and I couldn't at this point say until we really get into it whether that would be something that could be saved or not. We have talked about that, I spoke with the supporter when we were surveying, she was great, I was, you know, survey around her property, get control, et cetera. I've spoken to John and people at their office about saving that, and it's going to be very difficult to do because of access, and then also the drainage requirements. Drainage, we might be able to swivel around that, but then how do we access the back? And we have not come up with a good solution for that. We haven't spent, you know, obviously, we haven't spent a whole lot of time tackling that particular problem, that's always something that's further down the road than this decision that we're involved in here tonight, but it does look to be problematic, but our intent is to save it if at all possible, but it's just an intent, not a...
Right, and certainly, again, that's nothing we can...
And the other issue, if it's going to be removed, will be done professionally?
Yeah, we use, it depends on, we haven't, we do have arborists that we do use, it depends on the job, and it depends on the lot, in some cases, we just use tree clearing operations, if it's a little bit larger lot, and it demands sort of larger pieces of equipment, we'll use those guys. We do have arborists that have access to bucket trucks and will, you know, limb trees appropriately to care for them if it's situation-wise. So we use them on a case-by-case basis, but certainly we'd be cognizant of any root systems that extend over property lines and things like that. We'd never attempt to pull stump that was all on a property line, it might damage anything on the other side of it, those are typically ground rather than old, but...
And again, I think you have, you have the great advantage of having a person developing this property that lives in your neighborhood, so, you know, you know, open communication, that's, I mean, I think there's so much that people are concerned about, and I certainly understand your concerns, but a lot of it is just stuff that doesn't fall within our ability to deal with, so I just always encourage people to communicate with the builder, whether he lives in your neighborhood or not, but communicate and try to work these things out.
So is there a way I can be guaranteed that they would use a professional arborist?
Not from us, not, no, and he's not willing to, you know, he has no, he's no, we can't require him to, and he, you know, he's just too much in the, you know, too many, too many variables, and I'm sure he'll do his best, but he just has to decide, yeah.
He happens to be a neighbor I have yet to meet, and I don't count out anyone else, which is quite unusual, so I know we both have to become good neighbors.
I hope so.
I hope so.
All right, and, all right, anything from the board further? Frank, you have a concern? What are you going to do with that?
I have a concern.
You know, I have the concern, it's a close call, but I also think that, you know, it's, I recognize the reality of developing a lot this size, and what you need to build on it in order to make it improve, to improve your property, and everybody who owns similarly-sized lots in that neighborhood, whether it's them or whoever they sell their property to, at some point is going to be looking to improve their properties as well, and probably want to do the same thing. So I recognize the tension between what situat is and was, and the size of the houses, and it's a constant problem that we have, we have to deal with. But, you know, as Bob says, I don't think that this is shockingly large, certainly compared to a lot of the other homes we've seen before. It's 2,700 square feet, it's not that big.
Right, yeah. I mean, I think I would, you know, I would certainly echo Frank's concerns, I don't know who said it, somebody smarter than me said it, but one thing we're sure of is change, and it's, it's definitely bigger, but again, 2,700 square feet is not 4,800 square feet, and I realize it's a little bit farther down, but it seems like the larger houses maybe are coming to a, you know, next door to you, and at some point, you know, those that are sitting here may decide, these are all getting too big, and I need to find someplace else, and, you know, the fact that somebody can build a larger house on that property so close to the ocean makes your land certainly more valuable. But in the meantime, I, you know, it's, I think it's a nice design, I can't say that we've always seen designs which I thought were as attractive, and I said it three times now tonight, I think at least, that you have a builder who's in the neighborhood, and I hope he's going to be a good neighbor, and he's going to build a nice house, and you're going to have nice new neighbors, and that, I don't, I think it's certainly an intensification, but I would not find it, you know, unduly, what's the...
More substantially.
More substantially detrimental to the neighborhood than what's existing. When you have these smaller, older homes, you know, you kind of get more used to the nicer home when it comes, but I think it's going to be an improvement to the property. So, that's my position.
Yeah.
Yep.
No, I don't have anything else to add.
Anthony?
I don't have anything else to add, no.
Okay. All right, so do we have...
Okay, so we need a motion.
We need a motion.
On the application of K and E Construction for a finding and special permit with respect to, to raise and reconstruct a pre-existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling at 55 Gilson Road, move that the board find that the property is non-conforming with respect to lot area and lot frontage, that the proposed reconstruction of the property will reduce the, the non-conforming as to the...
The width and front yard as well.
As to the width and front yard, yeah, I'm just trying to read these numbers across.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Reduce the frontage?
Width, front yard, this rear is okay, right?
Yes.
Yeah. As to the width in the front yard, that the proposed reconstruction will lessen the non-conformities, and that the proposed reconstruction, however, will intensify the non-conformity with respect to lot area due to the size of the house, and further move that the board find that the proposed reconstruction as set forth in the plan of Grady Consulting LLC dated June 24, 2015, will not be more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure, and that the board should therefore grant the special permit.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good luck. Thank you all for coming out.
Good luck.
Thanks. Good job.
See you soon.
See you soon. It doesn't go with your stormwater, right? Yeah, yeah. Soon as you would.
Twenty days, you know, it's...
Twenty days.
Jake presented the hearing?
I think so.
We have to make a decision, we have 90 days to write the decision, and then the appeal is 20 days, I think, after.
From the filing.
After the issuance.
Right. We thought it at the town.
So one of us will write it, if you guys want us to circulate it, before we sign it.
Okay, okay, that'd be great.
Unless you want to write it, Captain. Unless you want to write it, Captain. He's ignoring me. I said unless you want to write it yourself.
No.
I don't think I can write it as well as you said it.
I've been saying it a lot of the last couple of years.
All right. Who's on that one?
I'll do it if you want. I've got the form on these, the L ones pretty...
Awesome. You can do it for me. I am just like...
Happy to.
I will take, I've got this one to go.
Oh, you have two not done, so you're getting, yeah, you're getting...
Well, the first one's kind of a sentence or two.
The first one's easy, honestly.
Mr. Solomon, you're it.
Thank you very much.
Waited for you all night.
Try to keep this to five minutes before you want to watch the baseball game.
I think that's tomorrow night.
Yeah, I don't think... Yeah, no, it starts in five minutes.
I know the red side.
I'm sure someone somewhere is playing baseball and with the internet, we could be watching it in five minutes.
Yeah, the red side comes, start the...
So what do we, what do you have for us that we're going to punt, as I already talked to you about?
Well, I think that I enjoy your presence. Always a pleasure to come here.
Welcome to have you.
Doing all kinds of interesting things. What's really happening is, down through the wire, Michael Solamondo has scheduled to sell the last of his 14 buildings. And he spent the first two years trying to get some property in Green Bush. Then when looking, when we looked into it, it turned out that there was probably three sets of people who died having an ownership interest, though no probates were had, and there were family members who were fighting with one another and were like, we can pay it. It was just not going to make any sense. So that's when we discovered through Paul Mirogino that there was a situat affordable housing trust, which I had spent about two and a half years mostly in the Mass General, and I guess that's what might have happened back then, and I didn't see it in the paper, so I didn't know what about it. But we looked into it, we met with some of the people, this gentleman here. And so it led to a purchase and sale agreement, and that was about two years ago. And then we started doing more investigating and found out that there was some, some things that needed to be done at the association level. So that's when we approached them about having an amendment to the purchase and sale agreement. So instead of Michael waiting and then building it later, he was given permission to borrow it, borrow money and build it with the understanding that then they will make, they will make all the reasonable efforts to make sure that everything is in place so that when he gets the house built, everything will be in order and we won't have to worry about it. But it worked out. So now the house is finished, almost. It's right on...
Stop the trash.
I also, as a result of the surgery I had, I'm losing my memory, so that's why I have to try to get as much of this done as possible because our son and daughter-in-law have been lawyers for 25 years each. They got a home place, or they already own the place. They just want me to sit at home and take care of anything that I haven't finished yet, but doing it at home. But I'm not complaining about it because I know I am losing my memory. So all of this has led to, I made a couple of inquiries and it turned out that unknown to me, there's, the selectmen, I guess it is, had already decided they're going to change everything. And so they called for a meeting in June 9th, June 9th, I think it was, and I was invited. We had it on here at the, I guess that's first clip, or second clip, built the Marina. And that was a very nice meeting. Everybody sees the north was going on and explained to them what we were trying to achieve, that, well, the only way we were going to be able to do this is to ask the situat affordable housing trust to agree to take ownership of the land from the town of Mass, from the town of Situate, which goes back to when they had that arrangement with the butt and sand and gravel, buy all that land at a significant price. But there was one little piece that remained, which is what we had now for the affordable housing, on that street that runs behind the pretty, the purity street, the burial ground and bringing you over to where the green bush is. So I had a, I had a conversation with the town council, Trumey, nice fellow, I've known him for a long, long time. I explained it to him, what we were trying to do, that he would, Michael would just wait and look to be reimbursed for all the money he spent when, when the association, excuse me, the trust was able to put it together. And in the meantime, fill out the form that the electric company is looking for so that they can attach some of the wires and would be able to finish the house. That's what I'd like to achieve. So what I found out today is that he asked, he called over to the board, over to the town yesterday, and then I think we spoke with this gentleman, if I'm not mistaken, is that correct?
Uh, no, I don't think he did.
Oh, I forgive him. It was somebody, somebody that...
Probably was Laura in our office.
Oh, okay.
I was out of the office most of the day.
All right, excuse me. And so Mr. Trumey had indicated he was going to give me a call today because he knew I was coming here tonight, but he didn't get around to it, or if he did, I didn't get the call. But that's what I'd like to do, so that in that, in that sequence, if you think that that's a good idea and if whoever is going to call that shot thinks of it. Now, I know that a lady who is still on, on the, on the trust, where that person, her name is, I think you probably already know her, but she's a very, very pleasant person. And she said that as far as she's concerned, it seems to make sense to allow them to do that. And of course, I've got some evidence here that they did it at least twice, where the trust itself acquired, already owned the title, already owned the property and deeded it over under the affordable housing arrangement to two people. So I thought it would work, and if it did, then the last house would be sold. I think everything is in a position to have, have us all go up there and take a look at it. The Marina, I'm calling it Marina, but it isn't really a Marina, but there is a facility out there where anyone who wants to have a boat and a berth can have it. It's been, that's been going on for three years. And right now about, we've got about, I think, 18 berths. And what it says in the, one of the five, what it says in the decision that was reached by this board on the special permit and so forth and so on, having amended, we apply that that be in order, and it is. About one half, about one half of the 18 are under lease to that many of the unit owners. And then the rest of them are people in the neighborhood. But one way or another, it's all filled. So going backwards, I was hoping that, passing through a few more days, maybe next week, we should know if the affordable housing trust is willing to do this, if the town council is willing to confirm it. I gave, I sent in all kinds of documents so you'd be able to see how this thing worked. And if that didn't work, if you do that, then I would submit to you a very brief statement as to what I would like to see as the obligation of Michael Solamondo to achieve the affordable housing. And that would be it of it. Now, I would be delighted to ask, to answer any question that you might have, but to provide you with additional information as you may need. It may very well be that you would like to speak with or even meet with some of the people who were brought into this by the selectmen when they decided that they were going to straighten out this thing once and for all, meaning the affordable housing trust. Those people are the town manager, I guess you'd call her, seems like a very nice person. She was out to hold himself available. Her assistant is a person by the name, I have her name someplace, she's a very nice person. And I've spoken with her and provided her with documents and other people. And I think it would work. I used up more than my five minutes.
Well, the game started, Walter, so. So if I understand it right now, that the property is in the name of Mr. Solamondo?
No.
No.
What happened is that property, you know, I've got the plan here, you know, well, that's a plan for the taking of all that land from the butt and sand and gravel, which was a huge sum. And that, and that was primarily for the golf course they wanted to build, which they did.
Oh, oh, yeah, that's right. That's coming back to me.
And so then if the land outside was large, the plan, the plan that I have shows five lots that were all...
It's all by the town.
And, and the, and the number one lot is where they have that facility for receiving, receiving trash and then breaking it down into component parts and then having big trucks come in and not burying anything anymore. But on that, top of that piece is where this affordable housing. And by the way, that affordable housing is, lot one is the one that Michael has built on.
Right.
And then the second one is lot two.
Yeah.
But that's large enough and so forth to have two duplex houses, so there's going to be three affordable units.
In that area. And don't you have a common driveway?
Common driveway, correct.
Right, right, right. It's like I said, it comes back to me now.
That's absolutely correct. And Michael had already indicated to them, they wanted him to make a proposal for building the two, the two houses on that lot two, he would be delighted to look into it and make a proposal, but that's off to the side.
Okay. Well, I did, now you talked to town council today, is that what you did?
I have not talked to town council today, I talked to them yesterday.
Yesterday, that's what I meant. Yeah. So it's my understanding that there is going to be, that, that, I mean, as a general principle, I, I can't imagine any objection to what you've talked about, but town council has to get involved with, you know, the wording of the amendment and someone from affordable housing needs to do that. And so, and then just to double check with the permit and what's the requirements of the permit. And it looks like we are very close to a final resolution of that, that issue. And I don't know how long ago that permit was, but I remember, I remember that project going on. It was quite a nice project, and I think it's, it's great to, you know, have this proceeded to this point. I only have one disappointment, Walter. Does this mean that when this is done, you're not going to be back?
Well, I, I have some other cases that I haven't finished yet, that my son's going to end up handling the court, the court actions. But I have an idea about being around, and they've already asked us to come in one and a half days a week to make, make up for some of the people who only work, they don't work a full week. But other than that, and maybe like to say our grandsons and grandchildren anyways, the oldest one is in her third year at Johns Hopkins.
Oh, my Lord.
Is really just this very brilliant person. And she has spent most of this summer working in a veterinarian's office, which is a big one, mostly all women. They do surgeries three days a week.
Wow.
And that's because the people I've met at Johns Hopkins, just Olivia, you've got to remember that the way we run this place is you, along with your friends, have to come to us and decide before we start school, the third year, what it is you're trying to achieve. If you're talking about being an MD or talking about being a person who's going to research things to find, find out how to save people from terrible illnesses, we can handle that. But if you're thinking about being a veterinarian, we don't have anything to do with that.
Yeah.
So we have to make up our minds. So she said, sir, I'm going to do something, do something about it. So she called a classmate of hers from Pervia Academy. Luckily, you're not, you can always dance, she's the same grade as Olivia. And so she said, sorry to bother you, but I'm wondering, does your mother know anybody who's looking for someone to work in a veterinary clinic this summer? And she said, good heavens, just this morning at breakfast, my mother said to me, we need somebody. I'll call it out. So Olivia put down her phone, she was probably going to get a sip of tea, and all of a sudden the phone rang at home. She picked it up, and who was about the mother? She said, Olivia, I've always, I've always had great thoughts about you. I'd be, as soon as you can come here, we can meet with the whole team. So she made arrangements to fly over here, have them beady, and now she's working three days a week, Monday, Sunday. And the two dogs that she helped work on, in the very beginning, was a dog that came in having been struck by a car. And she came home first day and said to everybody, I almost threw up. That poor dog. And then the second day was that the dog, one of the dogs that they have at home came down with Fiona.
Oh, boy.
She worked on that too. So she's really learned a lot, but she told me yesterday that it's been great for her because she's absolutely certain that she does want to be a veterinarian.
Oh. Well, well, in that vein, I'm going to take the opportunity to wish Angel Memorial Hospital in Boston a happy 100th birthday today.
Really?
Yes, and I'm sure that they would have loved to have someone like her join their team, but it doesn't sound like that's meant to be.
Well, I think, I think you're probably right. I think that what will happen, and it's true for as John Hopkins... I think that what will happen, and the people at Johns Hopkins have all kinds of connections with the Boston Hospital, I think that maybe next summer, she'll be working at Mass General.
That's very good.
But anyways, but I, I know how busy you all are, and I know this is a difficult situation, but all I was trying to find was a common denominator, and then just fell on me, fell, fell beside me.
Well, I think that, yeah, we'll, and we'll probably be able to wrap that up. Sounds like we can maybe get that wrapped up next month. And it's-
And then looking at the property, I mean, that's not a problem. The only problem with, with the affordable house is that it would be a lot better if we had the electricity.
Yes, I would think most people who want to buy a house would prefer electricity.
No, no, that's not the buying, but for you to take a look at it, because the artist for them to finish the inside, they have to have some electricity. So, that's why I was, I thought I would have a call from Truomey, so then we could just fill out that form that I have, and it would just show that, because I could, they could, they could record that. I left the copy, but the planning board voted last-
Yes, yes, we saw that, yeah, that's great.
So that could be done, and then we have a contact for the, for the company in Brockton, we could probably get that done right away, and then, then we could have the process for that. But everything is ready to look at and brought in.
It'll be great to see it resolved, because it's, it's, you know, again, I remember when this project started, and it's going to be a, a very nice, you know, it's going to have nice evidence of the ability, or the collaboration of a town and, you know, a private enterprise to create a very unique affordable house for the town. And, you know, it's, it's in a nice area, I think it's going to be a nice house and a nice opportunity for someone, and I know it's taken a lot, but Mr. Salamando and yourself have really stepped up and done a lot of work on this, and I think it's excellent, and I'm going to be glad to see it resolved.
And how have you been doing it? You sat on the floor of all of those meetings.
Yeah.
We had all kinds of people coming in trying to cause trouble, including one person who works in this building.
Which shall remain nameless, I don't know who that might be, could be anyone. Mr. Sullivan, we'll see you next month, we hope.
Thank you, Walter.
Well, thank you very much.
Have a good night.
It's a nice meeting you all, and I see you all.
Okay. Anything else, any other business?
No, that was our business.
What is your business?
State your business.
State your business. Minutes. Minutes. Oh, she's so quick.
Do you have a minute for the minutes?
The camera was out, I really wanted it.
This was from last week?
Thanks, Walter.
Last month?
Last month.
Last month, I'm sorry, yes.
And I wasn't here, oh, yeah, yeah.
You and I were here.
Circulated these, right?
Yeah.
Approved.
Thank you.
I don't think, I don't think I have the authority to approve them.
Actually, I don't, we don't have a board on-
I mean, unilaterally, I don't think I have the authority to approve them.
I don't think you can do them.
Really? Do we have to have the three people who voted to be here?
Well, I can't, well, I don't know, but I don't feel like I can vote in minutes I wasn't here. Do you? Yeah, you probably do.
I wasn't here.
Yeah. I mean, the problem is, is two of us, who, and there's only two that, you can wait till next month.
And that's a majority?
Can we approve minutes by majority?
I don't know.
Yeah.
I really don't know.
I think so, too.
Is that word special?
Yeah, and most is for updating the public.
Right, right.
And so, yeah.
And Ed has also had a chance-
Prove them at your risk.
Chance to see them via email as well.
Somebody's got them jacked, but I don't think-
We were all circulated, right? And Ed is, Ed is good with them, from what I understand.
So that, it wasn't, you know, that he didn't, well, I move that we approve those minutes pending Ed's electronic approval.
I think she already got it.
I think you already got it.
Okay, then I move that we approve those minutes.
Okay, what was the date?
June 18.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion to amend?
Second. Couple seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
There it is.